Okay, welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Pickwa City Schools Board of Education on this 24th day of February 2022. Jeremy, can you please call roll?
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here. Okay, if everyone can join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've all had a chance to review the minutes from our last two meetings in January. Did anyone notice any changes that needed to be made? Okay, otherwise, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? And motion carries, the meeting minutes are approved. So moving on to tonight's agenda, are there any changes or updates to be made there?
There was one last minute change to the agenda under new business, and that is to approve the sale of High Street and Wilder to the city of Pickwa. They've gotten things finished on their end, and they're ready to move forward with the two projects that have been discussed before the board. And so, we just got that word today, so they asked if we could put it on here tonight to get approval so we can keep moving forward with those two construction projects.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries, the agenda has been approved. So, moving on to Mr. Bostick for an Upper Valley Career Center update.
And we don't have our meeting until Monday, so nothing tonight to report.
Okay, and do we have anything from hearing of the public? No, okay. So, Mr. Hiddle can now give the treasurer's agenda update.
Good evening, are there any questions about the financial reports that were attached? Next item on there is the approval of tax rates for '22 and '23. '22 is on there this year because we did that substitute levy, and so they needed to get the tax rates updated for that, as well as next year's '23 tax rate. So that's something that we do every February, and so nothing has really changed, and it's stayed pretty much the same. The third item that we have on there are fund-to-fund transfers. We just wanted to say thank you to one of our donors, Bill Atkins, had donated $2,000 to the district. We're going to divide that up amongst the buildings, put into their District 007 staff trust accounts, so that when they want to order pizza and things like that for their staff, they're able to do that. Because there's not a good way to fund those accounts, and so when this opportunity came along, we thought this was a good place to use that. So, we appreciate Mr. Atkins' donation on that. Other things on there are dealing with our debt service, as well as the Darby Wright Scholarship that we're going to be giving out this year. Any questions about the fund-to-fund transfers? And that's all I have for that. We have lots of new business to talk about.
Okay, any questions on the treasurer's agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda?
So moved second.
Okay, do you need to call roll?
Yeah.
For that, okay.
Yep. Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Hi.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, and the treasurer's agenda has been approved, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thought it would be good to have Mr. Messick, our high school principal, talk a little bit about some of the changes that are happening with graduation requirements. Seems like every year we have this conversation because the state continues to change it over and over again. It's hard to keep up with it and understand what their changes are now, but I thought it was important that he do that so that we can at least get that knowledge. How many graduation requirements do you have now, Rob, in place between classes? Are there three different ones now?
Yes, there's three different ones.
So they're working on three different requirements for three different classes, and who knows what's coming up? If you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone.
Okay.
I'm sorry, our guest at home can hear, and just talking a little bit about that and where we are with the work on this year's graduating class.
So we are actually, we just went there with this with our business advisory meeting. I think Scott summed it up the best when I said, you know, the graduation requirements, and he said, "We're at the point now, if you just know the graduation requirements, then you should be able to graduate." That's how much it shifted and changed. So we have our newest rendition right now. So there's a couple major changes that have happened is, one, they've added in a new score. That's what they call their readiness score, and it's a, instead of being at a 700, students can get a 684. So what that means is, 700 used to be the passage. So a student can still be able to graduate with that number, but they don't meet the 700 mark. So how does that affect us? Obviously, that encompasses a lot more of our students will be able to hit that mark. But even though they hit that mark, which the state says that is good, it will still count against us if they don't hit the 700, when they start doing the report card part of it. Ultimately, it's about the kids, so it's a positive move in that direction. Scott and I looked at the data over the course of years, minus, you know, our bump last year, but that's very obtainable for most of our students, so that's good. The other thing that they put in as a new requirement, the concept is great, the layout not so much. There's a financial literacy class that needs, that all students must have to graduate, so just like if it was a health credit. So currently, what we do is it's a stand, it's not a standalone class, it's actually incorporated into other classes. So if you teach this to all of your kids, let's say through government, finance and banking class, success-bound class, if they hit all these markers, we have multiple ways they can do it, then they are able to, you know, to graduate. Now, the state has come in and said it has to be an independent class, an independent 80-hour class. So that presents a lot of challenges. Once again, the idea behind the class, we know that people need this, people have, people aren't very smart with their money, especially with so many of our students who are going right into the workforce. One of our business advisors shared that talking with new hires out of high school is very difficult, because they, a 504 plan is completely, they're oblivious to it, they don't understand what that means. And with the large portion of our students who actually do enter the workforce, right away, we need to make sure that, you know, we get that to them. But by making a standalone course, we only have to have 20 credits to graduate, now we turn around and we're going to add this half-credit, so it's going to eat up one of our elective credits. As you guys know, over the course of the last six, seven years, we've done a lot to develop specific programs based upon our students, where they're going to go to college or what career fields that they're going into, you know, our engineering stuff, our nursing programs and all that. You've heard me talk about all those things. Well, those are elective credits. So if you add this class in, then you turn around, you rob one of those classes of the, you know, of kids going into those classes. A lot of those classes are very dependent upon our career center partners, because they've come in and offered those things into our building. So we have to, you know, obviously, enrollment draws those programs, so that's a concern. So we have to work our way through that. The other part of it is, for us as a district to add this class in as a standalone class, that requires me to dedicate a full teacher to that position, and that would have to be, we do everything, obviously, Jeremy holds us accountable to this, to make sure that we have the right amount of people for the right amount of jobs, and if the numbers don't support it, make sure you, we don't rehire it. Because of that, you know, we're obviously right at where we are, a marker at the high school, and so we would have to hire a whole new position, so a brand-new person for that. And there's, obviously, there's no funding that has been given to us for that. So we have to work our way through that. Actually, Scott and I have already started kind of working on an alternate plan that we would like to try to work through first. Don't want to kind of unveil it yet, because we've still got to work through some kinks to make sure that it works out, but, so we're trying to work on ways where we can make sure that we don't hurt the kids by taking, they can fulfill this requirement in another setting, so that they can still get to the electives, and we don't have to hire a new person. But we still, the problem is, is the state, we have to teach it to next year's freshmen, incoming freshmen, and we still have zero guidance on it from the state. We have the information, so you have to offer it, but not how, what it is, and everything else. And the other thing, this is kind of weird, so it's a financial literacy credit, so automatically kind of think of finance and banking, math teachers. It has to be taught by a social studies teacher or an FCC LA teacher for it to count, or a business teacher for it to count as a credit. So it took out my finance and banking classes out of it, so anyway. So, it's pretty interesting stuff that we're going to work through, but we will get through it, just like we always do. So those are the major changes, nothing's really changed with the SEALs, and, you know, obviously, we only have two tests that are required by everybody for graduation, but all the tests are still on the floor that we have to take. And we are, ACT test is coming up here next week, the next Thursday. We have the ACT test coming up, so the testing cycle starts for Pickwa High School very soon. Any questions on the new graduation requirements? Nothing? All right, 11:30, Pickwa High School tomorrow, be there to watch the show choir perform to the sixth graders, so you can actually watch the show choir show in Pickwa, because now it's always been out and traveling around, so, in their competition. So I strongly encourage you guys, take a lunch break, come see us, all right, we'll get you good seats, all right, right there in the middle of the rowdy's kids, okay? All right, so Heath will get you set up with that.
Will do.
Okay. All right, we all good?
Yeah, thank you.
So I can't cancel school tomorrow?
What's that?
So I can't cancel school tomorrow?
Well, it's a funny story, so everybody thinks I have the power to cancel school in the high school, say, "Mr. Messick, where are you?"
I would gladly give that to you.
And said, "That's a school board decision, you need to talk to Nolan." So apparently, he's the only Nolan.
Congratulations, Nolan.
We're protecting you, boss, we're trying to keep it under control.
Do I get to make that decision, like, right now?
What's the saying, with power becomes great responsibility? You don't want that. Thank you, Mr. Messick. From graduation to kindergarten, kindergarten registration's coming up, we really want to get the message out to parents, because the sooner we get students in our care, then we can start getting information to them and getting them ready. So Mindy heads that up.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
I won't steal any more for the thunder, but she would like to talk about that and make sure you're updated, as well as our public, so Mindy Garrett.
Good evening, and I hope you all are well. It is icing outside, supposedly, so that's a good time to talk about kindergarten registration for next year. So tis the season. So we are going to open that up, the online registration, starting on March 1st, so it'll be coming up soon. Kindergarten registration is available to all parents who live within the Pickwa City School District, who will have a child who will be aged five on or before August 1st. So we are asking parents to get online, get that registration process started. We will be holding four large registration events at both Spring Creek and at Washington. Spring Creek's will be on December 12th, that's a Tuesday, from 5:00 to 6:30, and on Saturday, April 23rd, from 9:00 to 11:30. Washington will hold theirs on Saturday, April 9th, from 9:00 to 11:30, and Thursday, April 21st, from 5:00 to 6:30. And again, this is an opportunity for parents to come in, do the online application, they can also bring up these events, any paperwork that they have, such as certified birth certificate, if they have their photo ID preferably, proof of residency, that they live within, inside the Pickwa City School District, if they have any custody paperwork, that's court-stamped, make sure they bring that as well. And again, kindergartners will need, and all immunizations updated, and physicals need to be completed as well. And that can be a well-child check, that's dated from September 6th of 2021 up to current, so that would work for that. And just a reminder for anybody to be fully registered, all that needs to be completed, so there's just a lot of work that needs to be done. In August, then, at the buildings, they'll have a kindergarten screening event, and that's where they'll test academics, or look at academics, they'll look at health checks as well, and any additional screening that will take place during that time. So we'll have the website updated, hopefully, I'm waiting on a couple things from elementary principals, but we'll have the website updated before March 1st. This year, we're going to do things a little bit differently. Usually, parents can contact the buildings to schedule an appointment for kindergarten registration. Parents can still do that, but we're also going to offer an online registration as well, so they can get a link and complete everything. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
We had our spring conferences, and typically at that time, teachers will start to talk to parents about some summer school options and things to do to help get kids caught up and back on track, make up some learning loss that may have happened as we get into the next school year. So summer school is a really important part of that, and our curriculum directors have been really working hard on that, and I think we had our best numbers probably last year, with summer school, we had a really great turnout, and they're going to mimic a lot of that program. So if you could come forward and tell us a little bit about what's going to happen K-12 to help our students and parents this summer.
Good evening. As Mr. Thompson said, we really did have a very successful summer school program last year, and we were able to really expand what we do, because we had ESR funds that we could use to help support that, which was federal money that came in, COVID funds to help close learning gaps. Luckily, we still have money to be able to use that again, those same funds again this year to operate summer school. So we are looking at summer school for the elementary kiddos in August, it'll be kind of a jumpstart back into the new school year. We are going to offer it on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we'll give them Friday off, and it'll be from 9:00 to 11:30 in the morning. As we did last year, we're going to continue to focus on small group instruction, because we know that's the best way to be able to meet individual students' needs, is in smaller groups rather than larger groups. We will have, teachers will be making recommendations of students that they would like to attend summer school, and they'll be in contact with parents to invite them and encourage them to have their children participate. We are going to be holding it at Pickwa Central Intermediate School again this year. That was a nice central location, and that was important, because we were able to offer transportation last year, and we're going to be able to offer transportation again this year. So having it in one central location just helps facilitate the transportation routes. And as of right now, we are looking at, it'll be approximately, based on the number of kiddos that we would like to serve, we'll be looking at hiring close to 55 teachers to work during the summer. So it's a large, large number of teachers involved with that program, and as well as bus drivers to get the kiddos to and from the program. We're really looking forward to hopefully having attendance be as great as it was last year, and be able to really help our students who might have some learning gaps as a result of the pandemic or other circumstances. Mr. Bloom will tell you about the secondary.
Good evening. So junior high will follow the same dates as the elementary students, the same timeframe. They will work on really bridging from the spring into the summer. We use some programs that are designed for math and reading ELA jumpstart for those students. So we'll have between two and four teachers who are working with those students, again, it will be at Pickwa Central, we will provide transportation for those students, and I agree and I echo that, the ability to provide transportation does increase our numbers, and allows us to reach those students that really benefit the most from that jumpstart into the year, that may otherwise not be with us. High school's a little bit different, that will run the entire summer. We'll actually start those students almost since, from the last bell that rings in May, we'll have students who are starting to work on credit attainment. Typically, it's for one of two reasons, it's to recover maybe a credit that I didn't achieve over the past year, and we do have a large number of students who are working ahead for credits, things like health, perhaps, or another class like that, where they'd like to free up time and nurse schedule during the year for maybe another math class, another science class, and they can do that over the summer. That will be primarily done through an online platform, it's the same one that we use throughout the year. They do have support from teachers throughout the entire summer. We offer office hours with a teacher here in the district, kids are able to come for face-to-face assistance, and the rest of that is graded by a number of different educators. For example, I grade all of the science summer school courses that take place. So we're able to interact with those students, even though it's an online platform, I can still say, "Hey, that was great, hey, what did you think about this? Can you try that again?" So that we're able to help them. I would estimate easily well between 100 and 200 students will take advantage of summer school to obtain that credit. For the typical student, if they work at the typical pace for the summer, they're able to achieve at least half a credit, we have kids who achieve even more. And so we have, for a lot of those high school students, it's a really good opportunity for them to get back on track or even to get ahead. But again, that will run from, literally from the last bell, from the last day, we stretch that all the way to when school begins. So we give them truly a three-month timeframe to get that done. If you have any questions ever, we'd be glad to answer those for you. It is a great opportunity for our students to continue their education, even though we're in the summer recess.
They have two last summer, where it was June and then August.
We did, we did. And what we found was, they were both well-attended, but we got more, we got more out of the kids in August, getting ready to jump into the school year, and what we found in June was, some of those gains maybe kind of dissipated over the summer, and really, we looked at it and said, "We want to jumpstart their entry into the school year," hence the August dates, so that we really can do that bridging from the summer months into school start it.
Okay.
And we heard some feedback from parents and teachers that all summer long was, they were a little burned out by the end of the summer, so the choice to shorten it a little bit was, was me.
Are the requirements the same for teachers as they are during the year, or is there different requirements? Can they be less certified teaching the summer? Because I know we're having trouble getting higher E's.
Yeah, I can't speak for other districts, all of ours will be, I think 100% of ours will be certified teachers.
So it'd be certified or qualified substitute?
Qualified substitute teachers, yep. For, like I said, for example, I grade our high school summer school for science, I'm still a certified science teacher, so even though that's me grading, that still is what I'm able to do. So we use subs, or we use our teachers, and they're all certificated.
If we had a need for a substitute teacher, and they're one of our approved, less-than-degreed subs, which we have two of right now, we could let those folks do that in a substitute type situation. We definitely wouldn't do it at the high school level for grading.
Right.
High school level material.
Right. Said, everybody at the high school who are graders are all certified teachers. We have math, science, ELA, and social studies that can grade those courses. Thank you.
Thanks. And that's it for me.
Okay, so now we can move on to the agenda, superintendent's agenda.
I'd like to recommend the board approve the attached list of donations and grants. French oil to PHS Science Olympiad, I think they do that every year, we're very grateful for that. Box tops for education, we get those from a number of parents and community members to our schools, and that helps a little bit out there. Coca-Cola and Can't Stop Running for the PCIS Run Club, they're a great sponsor of that in many things, we really appreciate their local business in our community as well. And a Walmart grant for our Senior Citizens Breakfast, that's an annual event, and we haven't been able to do it the last couple years because of COVID, we've moved that to a spring event instead of Christmas time, because Christmas is around the time when COVID always seems to peak. So April 1st, it'll be a great event, there'll be a lot of really good student entertainment, so we really want to get the message out on that and bring that back to life, so I'm excited about that event. So there's that. Recommend board approval for the request of the overnight field trip for the Pickwa High School softball team to the Macon County Softball Tournament to Cookeville, Tennessee from March 23rd to 26th, that's over spring break, and I've got the information here if you have any questions on that. And then recommend board approval for the enrollment of Gorko Cabanella Sarech from Victoria, Spain, at Pickwa High School for the '22-'23 school year as a foreign exchange student through the ASSC International Student Exchange Program. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
So moved second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? So the motion carries, and the superintendent's agenda is approved. So now, we can move on to Mr. Lyons with the personnel agenda.
Good evening, everybody, thank you. Going to point out a couple people, we have two retirements, number one and number two. We have Penny Chenoweth as a cook, she's been with us a couple different times, I congratulate her on being in the position to be able to retire, then of course Jackie Face, who I believe started with us, you would know better than me, but I think some, to some degree in like '95, and then kind of officially in '98, came on board as a teacher and has done a lot of different things, include summer school, and saved us by driving the bus this year before she went to work as a teacher. So thank you, Jackie, of course she's not watching, but anyway. So we'll miss Jackie, and we'll again recognize her in the spring, so. And then, number eight, and our new replacement psychologist position, Shelby Holt, straight out of her program. We had the opportunity to interview two fantastic candidates that Amy set up for us this week, had a good team going through those, and she's really going to be sharp and do a great job for us, so getting her on board. And then you had the personnel updates that I gave you as well, do you have any questions on any of those? Fall hat?
Okay, thank you. If there aren't any questions, can we get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved second.
Jeremy, can you call roll?
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, and the personnel agenda is approved. So no old business, correct? So now we can move on to the new business.
First one is to recommend board approval of the first read of the Neola Board Policy Update. As we've said before, Neola works with school districts, and they make sure that you have all the current legal terminology that has to go into place by law, and that's all these are, there's no new policies here, it doesn't change what we do, there's just minor changes and some things and a few additions in terms of what legally we have to provide, so those are all there. If you have any questions, they should be highlighted in green, you can see those changes. Any questions on any of those? Okay, that'll be the first read for that, then.
So do we have to go through and approve each one of these items separately?
No, we've got to do two reads.
Better coming up.
Oh, that are coming up, so this does not require anything, because it's only the first read? Okay.
Then, Jeremy, do you want to do number two, or do you want Chip to come up, or?
I was going to say, we do have Chip Hare here to discuss with us tonight the great additions that are coming to Pickwa High School and Pickwa Junior High, and the gracious donations of many community members, so I'll let him take it from here.
Mr. Hiddle, thank you, board, thank you for the opportunity. COVID, pandemic, blessing or curse, depends upon which way you look at it. Depends upon which way you look at and how your situation is. Two years prior to the pandemic hitting, we looked at the gymnasium. We, we looked at some items that might need some addressing, one of which was scoreboards and some other items logistically within the gym. Just wear and tear, just your normal items. As the pandemic hit, we were able to get our phase one of our construction with our new locker room area and athletic facilities. One of the things that we were able to do when we put those locker rooms in was allow for clocks. When I say clocks, clocks connected to the scoreboard so teams knew how much time was left instead of the old pull out your stopwatch or phone and see what time it is and put a clock down. You can actually see how much time's left so a team can see in the locker. So Mr. Hiddle said, we're going to put those connections in. However, Pickle City Schools will not be footing the bill for a new scoreboard. So thank you very much, Mr. Hiddle, for that information. So we put together a plan moving forward to how can we make our facilities a little bit, it was of an upgrade, yet at the same point in time, keeping it cost-effective for not just the athletic department and the district with the community. We were able to put together an idea of, if you go to our, our football stadium, we have a video board. And when you, that video board really takes that event to another level. Engagement for the fans, it's engagement for the teams with instant replays, but also the things that we have with, with our Indian Nation Station. It's really taken it to a level of almost a professional event or a high-level collegiate event. We get a lot of compliments on that. We felt like it was time at some point to bring the video board into the gymnasium, but we wanted to make sure that we were ready and we were ready to go and we had the pieces in place. The big part of that was the Indian Nation Station and A.J. Ganger, who has done an outstanding job in, in keeping us ahead of the curve ball with technology. Fast forward, we got to a point where we felt like we need to get some pricing on what that video board was going to look like and also scoreboards. Pickle, as you guys know, is a great place for partnerships with community and partnerships with businesses. And this is a testimony to that. Edison State Community College, Park National Bank, and Dick Donnelly, all three helped us with making sure that we are going to get brand-new scoreboards and a video board that will not only be used for athletic events, but will also be used for community events such as the Veterans Breakfast that we have. Again, it's a piece that we can run videos on, pictures, recognize people in our community, but also recognize our events. If you go to our football games, a lot of them are not just necessarily videos of football players, but cheerleaders, band, commercials, all their community events that the Indian Nation Station put together. It's, it's meant to engage our community and get people involved with the game. So we are proud to say that that is going to be a big part of our gym renovation. This summer, we are going through the, I guess, I guess, is it part three or part two of the gymnasium renovations with painting and we have some wiring that, that needs to be taken out. So we're going to repaint it. We'll be putting up some new banners to update the, the gymnasium. And then also we'll be getting new chairs and things of that nature just to, to help with the upgrade of the gymnasium. Next summer, we are going to actually sand and repaint the gymnasium floor. It's time, it's been almost eighteen years since we've had it repainted. It's time, we've got a really good floor, it's been taken care of. However, it's just time for a fresh coat of paint and for it to get sanded. So pretty exciting for our kids and our program and our community to be able to, again, renovate great facilities that we have as we always just, that's kind of what Pickle's been able to do is just be able to keep it moving forward. And we'll be able to be able to move the scoreboard, some of those scores that we have into other athletic facilities in the district. Any questions?
I'm going to also add that there are two other Daktronics boards that will be installed in the district. One on Looney Road where the Pickle High School red sign used to be, but a lot of the lines you couldn't read because the lights didn't work. And it was also, you had to like phone into it to get it, like download the sign anyways. So that, that has been torn out. So you'll see there's iron there. We're going to be cutting that off and taking that out. There'll also be another digital sign that's put at the end of Tomahawk in twenty-five A for the Junior High so that they now will have a digital board that will have the Junior High's information scrolling out there on that, on that sign. So those changes are coming as well. And we couldn't have been, made it possible without the Donners, like you said, to be able to make that happen. So there's a lot going on with signage and it's going to look good when we're done.
When will those signs be here?
Well, I was told two weeks, two weeks ago.
So soon.
They, they warned us about the supply chain a long time ago, so.
I know the, the, the display sign in the gym is not even been created yet after that conversation. So it's not even, not even put together. So they, they would say June potentially, but who knows?
By the time we'll be able to get it up, it will be August is when we're hoping. So when school starts, it'll be up in, right?
Nice.
We would have liked to have sanded and painted the gym so that it'd be like a full gymnasium reveal, but obviously the board's going up in August and it takes a month to do the gym floor and we have all the other construction going on. It just wasn't going to happen. So it would have been nice to be able to be like, here's the new gym, but they'll have to wait till next summer.
I assume this is a turnkey operation where you, you, they won't leave until you know it's what you want?
Yeah, so when they put these, for this is good, one of the, when you put a video board, it's not as simple as just sticking on the board and you walk away. They've actually come through and they're going to come through again in a couple of weeks to work with our IT staff and making sure, because we've got to wire and put all of our IT lines in. So we will not, I assure you that they won't walk out the door and trip. It's, it's up to our satisfaction. The one thing about video boards though is they get a little quirky. And when I say quirky, it's just technology. We, you're, you have LED lights that sometimes go out. So we did make sure that we got the right warranty on it. And Jeremy, probably better to speak on it, but what we asked for, what they generally give us a five-year warranty, we asked for a ten-year warranty because just things happen. And we were told and we were assert, assured that those problems will be taken care of. And the other schools we talked to that worked with them gave them good reviews.
And I can say from the signs that we bought for our other buildings versus what we have with Daktronics and what we, what we've gotten from other people, that Daktronics is the right thing. We, we saved money in quotation marks when we bought the Vantage boards, but they just haven't. They're just not saying quality level.
So it's going to be different than what's at Washington, right?
Correct.
Higher quality or whatever, better looking?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, I guess I'll announce this tonight, but yes, we got a really, we got a really good deal from Daktronics and they took care of us and Rob's not here, but they, they gave us the most high-end boards. They had the same price as what we were initially looking at. So we, I, I went and negotiated with them a little bit harder and I said, we're spending all this, make it happen. So we, we're getting, the boards that'll be at the, the, out on Looney and twenty-five A are going to be really nice.
Is this the empty quote? Is this still says five-year warranty?
Originally, Frazier, I, I don't know what you're looking at. Originally, that was the original quote, but when we went back.
You got it, yeah, because this is, I think, and I may have pulled an old, the old one from the, my email because it's been a while since, since I looked at this. So we may have an updated copy. I'll get it to you. But the price didn't change on it from what it's at, but it's just maybe some of the terms.
Any questions? Thanks, guys.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
So we need to get a motion to approve, okay. So can I get a motion to approve this purchase?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. Okay, motion carries.
Next item on there tonight is approving RDA for the two parts of the work that we're doing this summer. Due to the price, I want to make sure that I brought them to you for approval. We've already went out for bid and got bids back on Architects. It's just a formality to go through. It's six percent of the project cost, so ninety thousand dollars for the Junior High and two hundred five thousand dollars for the High School, which is, I believe, a really good fair price compared to some of the other pricing we've got from Architects in the past. And oh, by the way, they done massive amount of work to get us to this point.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about this contract? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So the next item that we have is the defeasance of our outstanding COPS issue from two thousand and eleven, which was the air conditioning at the high school. And due to interest rates as to where they're at and the issue became callable as of March first, in some discussions with Mr. Bostick in the past and with our financial municipal advisor, we decided this is the right time for us to defees those COPS. Doing that means that we're going to save the district two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and seven cents. It will cost a million dollars today, but we were going to be paying that over the next five additional years. So while it costs us today, in reality, we're just paying for something today that we were going to pay over, over that time. But I wouldn't have been able to make almost two hundred fourteen thousand dollars off of, off of a million dollars with the way the interest rates currently are. So paying them off makes sense. The reason why we're defeating it as well is that we're paying interest on this money. When it was initially taken out, we were supposed to be a tax-free debt issuance. And due to sequestration, we've been paying some interest on it to the tune of about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. So getting rid of that, again, that's where the savings comes in as to why the district is saving money, paying it off. And in addition to that, I wanted to mention, although you don't need to approve it because you approved it last month, I just wanted to give you the number on the bond refinance because that process is finished. And so the district will be saving two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-two cents by refinancing the new building, the rest, the remaining portion of the new building bonds. So in total, we're looking at about a half a million dollars worth of savings on just taking care of those two things. That's positive.
That's good. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on that.
Item number five is approving the contract with Brumbal Construction. We went out for bid. We had two qualified bids that were returned, one from Brumbal and one from Archon. I believe the bids were about a hundred thousand dollars difference and Brumbal came back as the little bidder on that. The total amount for the final phase, well, I won't say the final because there's a kitchen renovation that needs to be done and a few little exterior things, but three million, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do the first four renovations, which is including a student union. That'll be pretty cool when it's finished. It's been fun to be part of that process of putting it together. You know, inflation and interests, our inflation has obviously been a big headwind in how this has turned out. It's a little bit more than we expected, but not anything that we can't manage. We've prepared for this, so it's, we're good to go.
The good thing, we've worked with Brumbal in the past.
They did a good job.
They have, they really have. They, they know our buildings, they know what they've got to do, so.
We sort of split up the work too because Archon will be at the Junior High working, so. Keep them both busy.
It was my first meeting with something like this and I walked out of the meeting pretty confident that they're going to get the job done, they're on top of it. I mean, I, I do this for a living and if I had another chance, they would be doing work for me too. They get, they're on top of it. They love what they're doing and they want to make a good impression, so that's half the battle.
We haven't always had that.
Okay. So let's get a motion to approve this contract with Brumbal.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Last item.
Last item on here for approval tonight is approving the res, the attached resolution, which was to allow superintendent and myself and the board president to sell High Street property and Wilder property to the city of Pickle. That has been, we've had presentations on both of the developments that are coming and they're ready to move to those next steps. So this is just the formality of approving that, that sale.
Okay. Do any of you have questions about that? Okay, so can I get a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. And is there anyone, nothing for hearing of the public on non-adjunct items? Okay, so our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, March seventeenth at six PM here. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and the meeting is adjourned.